Good evening all. And welcome to the February 3rd, 2020, Danberg County Council meeting. First we'll have a presentation by Councilman Edward Homer Junior.
Mr. Herr. Tell the father you come up again, thanking you for all your contributions. We thank you for life, health, strength, and thank you for your grace and mercy. And thank you for your son Jesus, and thank you for the Holy Spirit, and thank you for your words. And we thank you for this day that people live to see. We ask you please sir to look down on this meeting and make it what you have it be. Help this council to make it sustainable, accessible to use, and beneficial for citizens of Danberg County. We give us a vow of hand so we know we've come to show you our growth. That everyone has a time on my board. And all our loved ones that family members live in, and we know we'll be standing here. And we just pray that you just keep kicking up in your people's head. Have you continually stricken during, until you call home, in the name of you, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. We love you. We love you.
I am very grateful to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul was met on January 16th, 2020. Are there any corrections?
Yes.
All my things? Those closed. My packet. New first. So we'll have a agenda.
Make a motion through the Senate.
Right. Go to favor. Those closed. The agenda has been moved. Public presentation. One. Consideration. Update on the Danberg Barnwell Emergency Medical Center. Regional Medical Center President and CEO, Tal Williams, F A P E G.
Good evening, how are you? It is always a pleasure to be here in the county of Danberg. Since you all have been presenting as I made when I came to South Carolina, and so thank you for having me come back and see y'all today. With me in this field up here, I just want to introduce him. This is Matthew Hinkle. Matt is one of our vice presidents, and I want to introduce him for a reason. I've always learned that it's good to have good people around me, people that are smarter than you. This young man joined us in December of 2018, and why is it important that I introduce him? This young man took the reins, and he was the one who led the engineering and construction department to build this facility. He has done an excellent job. He leads our cardiology, radiology lab efforts, as well as our engineering and construction, and I just felt it was appropriate because he has done an amazing job for RMC and the people of the suburbs of South Carolina. So, thank you, man. Thank you, John. Wanted to go through just some of the highlights of the Danberg Barnwell Emergency Center. We have been just, I mean excited about what is going on in this center. It has been amazing. Has every day been just exciting? No, but that's life. But I will tell you, overall, this has been a success. And I got perfect slides when we began when we did serious, I can tell you. I want to go through slides, one slide more. Talk about our budget. You know, when we budgeted at the bottom, you'll notice, we thought we would see between April and September about 6,000 folks. As you'll see, we saw 7600, almost 7700. And then we thought we'd see 2300, so we saw about 3,000 the month of October and November. We're talking about a 27% increase over budget and a 30% increase over budget this past year. And we know we're running ED, we're also running outpatient times, and x-rays, ultrasons, ED. This has been an amazing feat for us because we've been overwhelmed and we love it because we wanted to come down here and treat patients and we did all that we asked for. So thank you. This tells us that we were coming for a true meeting. Our next slide. Thought one of the questions you might have is, where are they going? Because as you can imagine, one of the questions you might say, well, are we taking care of every person that's discharged and hungry? No, that's not the case. What we have found is about 7% on average, just about 6.7% of our patients, once we take care of them at the emergency center, need proper care. And of that 6.75%, we're finding 335 or 64% of those patients have been coming to RMC. So we're trying, you know, we have all their records, we have everything going on, we want to have that continuity of care. You'll find that's been followed up, about 6% going to Richland. As you know, Richland is the level one trauma center for the region. So there are some things that we treat them, if they are major, we either carefully like them or get them to where they need to be because it's all about who? The patient. Followed up with province, we have a huge cardiac program. In some points, we're guessing, y'all know, that there's huge burn program. So we try to make sure we get patient, not just, not about what, about what the patient needs. And then on the other side, you'll see the same factor here, you know, this is basically how we're taking them. Make sure who has been a great partner on the town has been a great partner, and as you see, you'll see some of the highlights that we're taking, the care of life numbers. Flip the next slide, use it as some of the transfers over the last two months. Next slide. And basically, that number stays consistent. This was about, like that. But the next one, once again, I said it's about 7%. This was about 7.6%. 230 of the total that transferred. Once again, pre-staying, about 60% have gone to RMC. Aitlin's got about 9% of the transfers, province about 7, tied with Christmas, Richland about 7. So no major surprises. Paramex is the next one. This is one that we talked about a lot. The ability to cover our costs and what would the paramex look like. And our next slide, I don't know, flip forward, forward. Yeah, there we go. We wanted to show this because this has a lot to do, when you hear about the universal version of healthcare. Medicare, 38% of our patients coming through the ED or Medicare, 28 is Medicaid. That takes us to about 61% of our patients being governmental. As you know, government payers don't tend to pay dollar for dollar. You know, it tends to be with Medicare sometimes between 85 and 87% on the dollar, and Medicaid tends to be a little lower. One of the things I want to point out, and we can talk about this later if you have questions, notice the self-pay. 17% for that first six months, and 22% those two months, about October and November. That's a really big deal. I'm stopping there and I'm pausing for a reason. You know, I say this to my board, I say this to my county, I say it to many folks. You know, if you go, you didn't get any fast food restaurants, you can't, I don't care how nice you are, if you go in there and you ask for a burger, they typically request that you give them some money before they hand you that burger. And of course, this being emergency care, we're not doing that because gift up, and we want to make sure people are taken care of, but this is a factor that at some point we will have to look at. That is a very large self-pay number to have 17, 22, and 23, not paying anything. So other strategies we will be talking about, though, because we have to. Next slide. Here we are in the financials. And I really want to spend a little time here. I want to focus then on the April through September slide. You may have heard in the, in the, somewhere in the paper, I think the article said CEO was bullish about this outcome. You may have heard about outsourcing, something about physician partners or other things like that. Anybody that sounds familiar to you? Well, you notice under the budget item, it's that third column, under salaries, you see where it says $4,690,000 is the budgeted number? See that? You'll notice in actual, we were able to drop that down to a million. Now, once you come down five lines, you see ED physician subsidy. You see under the budget zero, but you see the actual 9.62. Then at the end, you see where our budget is to lose 2.7 million, but in actual, we only lost 1.3 million. I remember the first time I came here, somebody asked, okay, what are we going to do if we're going to be losing these millions of dollars, how are we going to sustain? Well, our team has been working and talking about multiple strategies, and this outsourcing is what we're doing. One of the things we looked at when I arrived, we said, okay, you're talking about two or three million dollars, but the reality is, if you can't staff the facility with physicians, you're surviving off of locals. Locals can cost you three or four times more. And what we did is, we went back and looked at the numbers, and we said, you know, really, if we had to staff this facility with locals, we could have lost four or five million dollars. So what did we do? We went back, we looked at our ED on campus, we looked at our hospitals on main campus, we looked at this facility and said, how can we partner with an organization, with a larger bandwidth than us, and recruit physicians nationwide so that we can be staffed with employed physicians and not rely on locals that are coming in and out every day, and get a better price point, but still provide quality? And as you see, the writing's on the wall, wall, we live. So that's what, when we're trying to do things that are a little different than we've done historically, we're doing them because if I got one recruiter trying to recruit, it's not going to happen. And I will tell you, we were able, we were able to recruit all 6.2 ED physicians for the Danberg Barnwell Emergency Center before we opened. Fully staffed. That is huge. And you see the difference in budget. And that's what we're shooting for, because we want this to be a sustainable solution for this community. So I wanted to point that out because that's a big deal, and we're going to continue to work on how we can be more efficient so that we can continue to be sustainable. Next slide. Some facts. And this is my last one, but I want, I want to point out something. So if people ask, what are the facts? We provide, you know, that's 64 slides, CT, we have X-ray, we are running, and this is what we want to do, a little bit better job, make sure that people know that we provide outpatient services, diet, life, and sleep. And say, why is that important? Somebody that worked down here in Danberg and Barnwell, and they got to get lab work done. It's hard to tell you, boss, how much we all have of that. Boy, if I can drive 10 minutes down the road and get my lab work done, that makes a difference. Or boss man, boss lady, I'm going to be 20 minutes late to work versus I'm going to be half a day late when I got to drive up to Orangeville. You can get that done right down the street. We have the diagnostics, we have the lab capability to provide the service to the community. But the one I wanted to get to is that third bullet. Chairwoman Hannah asked a question the first time I came down here. Could we do all we could to not just bring the center, but provide jobs and opportunities in this community? I'm happy to say of our 50 staff members there, 18 of our STVs are Danberg residents. 12 of them are Barnwell residents. We did everything we could to make sure that we monetize this community so we could stay as local as possible. That is our goal, is to provide a service, more than just a service, but opportunity. And that's a big deal. I think you also see a lot of those bills of loans. That has got few real estate signs, as you know, when we built, we also increased some of the infrastructure thanks to your partnership. So that's what we're here for. I'll open it up for questions. We are so thankful that you allowed us to be in your community and to serve.
Paul, how are you doing?
Thank you, Senator. Hey, how you doing? Good. The, we, in the beginning, when this was being talked about in the Senate, the House, and everything, I thought Medicaid, Medicare was going to hit a higher rate of about 95% than pain, and all that stuff. When I looked back on this slide, it didn't look like it was going to be that much.
So, so I want to clarify. So what they were doing is, we have what's called this DISH reimbursement rate for uncompensated care. So typically, if you're not 100% hospital, you're paid at a rate. We had some time we paid about 50, 56, around that, that grade, 100%. What happened was, the hospital agreed to take this project home. They moved our DISH reimbursement rate up to 80%, okay? So that means for all uncompensated care for DISH, we get 80% back. The problem that we don't always talk about is, DISH is one of those in risk. It's typically a two-year lag period. So let's say you got $10 in uncompensated care, at 80%, I'm going to get eight of it back, but I'm going to get it 24 months from now. It's kind of like my daddy used to say, when my momma used to fix dinner for tomorrow, he said, well, I'm home tonight. And, you know, it's down for tomorrow, but I gotta pay checks tonight. I gotta pay check this year. So I'm not saying it's not coming, but that, it's behind.
Now, you get that as well for Orangeville now, right?
Yes.
By building this one, God damn it.
Yes, the other thing you got to remember, now, that Medicaid number is the Medicaid rate that I'm paying. That's, when you start talking about that 80%, that's uncompensated. So that's what I, that's supposed to be not paying, it qualifies when you get that paid. That's not just, okay, we paid our bills, we met your bill, it's no balance bill. Two different, two different things, and then sometimes we get them mixed up. But that 80% is over, every patient, that's $2 we're losing. Now, I will tell you, we're very happy about this. We did work with some of our local elected officials and some across the state. We have worked for the first time, after December 3rd, RMC has been 100% of DISH. We've been working for the last year to get that moved up, so for the first time, RMC is on the same playing field within the rural hospital in the state of South Carolina. That has not happened, ever. So that is a big deal, to ensure this region is getting its fair share.
How's Orangeville looking financially right now?
Well, you know, we have our opportunity. Part of it is looking at revenue, our expenses are doing well, but once again, just like here, the hospital is three-quarters government payer. As you may have seen, one of the things we're looking at is our revenue cycle. Many of our systems and revenue cycle are manual. So what we're doing is, we're going to hit those systems and we're reinvesting to ensure that we're doing things in an automated way, and not doing manually. But we're, we're soldiering forth, we're putting together great business plans, we have a pretty strong team, and I feel optimistic right now, I'll tell you.
I took my child over there to the emergency room, the guy played professional baseball, what's his name? Doc, Dr. D or something like that. He was amazing when he was at, he was at Ernst Care over here in Danberg. Ashard?
Oh, oh, I know you're talking about that.
I can't call his name either.
Yeah, he's a nice guy.
He was amazing.
Nice, nice guy, yeah.
Really amazing, so I thank you for that.
Oh, no problem. You're welcome. Car.
Thank you, Senator.
The thing is, the problem is, that's around the, um, do you have any other prospects of, like, any, um, uh, drug stores or anything you've done to open back around the ER?
You know, going back as far as the day we cut the ribbon, I think that was April 1st, I've heard a lot of landowners around us talk, but, you know, have I seen a move? Not yet. And, you know, we own the land going all the way back, and we, we've thought about some things, we've already talked about it yet, but I do see, I think I see a bright future out there, I really do. Our main thing is ensuring that we're, we're operating first. As you know, or you may not remember this, we did leave 1900 Square East side of that building open. It's shelved, we ran utilities through it, because what we're collecting now is what's coming into the building. You know, we may find that if we put a clinic in here, well, what does the clinic need to provide? We have primary care, cardiologists, we don't know. We're collecting the data because I want to make a fact-based decision, not a field group decision. And that's what we're doing now, but I know based on some schematics in it, I can put my office in there. And we got several interests, we use that intentionally, trying to collect, we plan it for the future. Well, since we are, so just like we have at the main campus, we have our telehealth, our telestrum program that's connected to Charleston, same thing here. So if you're in the back, and believe if you want a tour, we can show you, we have the telehealth carts in that building, and we're even looking at telepsych. And you know, we have a psych room with a bolted van and everything in that facility as well. And yes, we are using it, we need it, and that's one of the reasons, I'll tell you, I applaud Congressman Clyburn of the work he's done on infrastructure, because without broadband and those different services, telemedicine goes away. So they have really been instrumental in helping us, and without it, as you may have heard, we for the first time have teleICU at the hospital. We started from lunch today in January. Until 24 hours of the day at ICU, a doctor can observe our patient. That's huge. So if a nurse is sending a patient at 2:00 AM and she's got a question, there's a green button, she pops it, screen comes on, they can zero right in on the patient. And we're looking to do that across organizations.
Let me just comment on this, I've been to private school, lab work, and I've read about students, time that you spend, you're in, you're in there, you're getting dollars, the benefits of all due process have not been, have not been happening.
Well, thank you, and thank you to Matt, because that's one of his departments, what has got you?
Do you anticipate any changes in the reimbursement rates for Medicare and Medicaid?
Well, the short answer is yes. If I could tell you I knew what it was, I'd do the master of DC. Predicting what Washington is going to do, you can't do it. I'll give you an example. As many may know, they were supposed to make a decision on something that would roll out of healthcare back in those, where they delayed it to December 22nd. And let's be real, we know they weren't going to make a decision on December 22nd, now they pushed it out. Politics being what it is, I'm not on either side, it just is what it is, we have to find a way to cover the cost of healthcare. Medicare and Medicaid are huge, huge expenses. Now, one of the things I always share, and you may have seen this right before Christmas, our governor signed two 1115 waivers, I don't know if you all saw that. The one that the media has tended to talk about is the one about work requirements for patients with Medicaid. I don't know if you all saw that. Well, there's two parts to that. There's one that talks about work requirements, and there's another, that's pathways to care that talks about increased access. And in the executive order, if you pull, if you pull that down and read it, it goes in effect January 1st of 2021, and the governor wrote into that an executive task force that is working on that now. See the roadmap? I'm, I'm excited about it because there's always exemptions to work, requires, but what it's bound to like is increased access to over 30, maybe 40,000 people in the great state of South Carolina to have some form of coverage that they don't have now. If we can find a way as a state, and like I said, I'm not in trouble, but if we can find a way as a state to increase the Medicaid eligibility from 67% of the public level to 100, you're talking about people that make between $17,000 and $25,000 that are caretakers. If you can find a way to give them coverage, healthier parents lead to healthier children, which leads to healthier communities. So I am optimistic about that. Drug costs, we need to address them, some other things we need to address them, but do I know where they're going?
Well, are you implying that there's some sort of backdoor effort to expand the Medicaid without making it public? In other words, take what was offered before?
I would never insinuate that there's a backdoor effort to do anything. What I am saying is that the media has covered what they've covered, and I believe the governor stated what he stated. And the coverage, we are looking at it, and it will be expanded, not expanded, it will be instituted January 1st. But I would never insinuate that anyone is going to backdoor anything, or anyone's trying to cover anything. What I'm saying is, we are trying to find a way to get the good people of South Carolina coverage, but at the same time, wanting to be fiscally responsible and ensuring that those that should be working are working. Does that, does that answer your question? Because I would never insinuate that.
I'm glad to hear your politics.
I love it.
We want you to know that we appreciate you.
I appreciate you all.
I had a kid who had to go to the medicine center, I couldn't hear him, and I, I wanted to be able to hear, you know what I mean? So he's telling me most of it, he's going, I keep it waiting, I can fix it, I can make you hear what he told me. And he told me, and he said, that I can make you listen.
I'm not touching that.
The first rule that is going up in Charleston and Berkeley County, are they going to have any effect on your hospital, with, with our emergency care?
You know, I've been asked that question a number of times. And immediately, I don't think so. And I'll tell you why. I think the closest one is on the edge of 189, 190. That's approximately 45 miles away from our area, 145. Well, Lexington County is closer than that. You know, I'm just one of those kind of folks, you know, when I was dating, ma'am, I couldn't worry about the other guys talking to my girlfriend, I had to take care of my business with my girlfriend. I think what we got to focus on is not worry about who's building what, we need to focus on what's going on in our house. We need to work on our relationship with our customers and our community and say, how can we serve you better? At the same time, we need to make sure that we're very clear about the value of all of this patient. You know, one of the things I share with every new employee is, do you know that we are the largest employer in this region? Do you know that we cut three to four million dollars in paycheck every two weeks? Do you understand the value of having us here? Do you understand that? Invest in us and trust us because it means so much to this region. And, and that's what we're trying to do. We're looking at how can we recruit more doctors? They can build all they want in Charleston, they got 22 doctors there, 300,000 folks. Danberg, you got 2.7 doctors there, 300,000 folks, 8.3 at Orangeville. We have to begin to love ourselves. So am I worried about them? Absolutely not. That's why you saw the Phillips deal where we're, where we are investing in a $16 million long-term strategy to bring the latest in DT technology, MRI, a brand-new CAT lab to our site this year. That's why we have robotics, and the first robotic we have, it'll be done at our hospital February 10th. I'm not worried about Charleston according to the year.
We thank you for the value you bring to Danberg County. Now, I've only heard good things about the emergency system. Continue with good work.
Thank you, Senator.
Senator Charles Freely, recently the National Physician County's recognized facility as a major success, and they have awarded, the counties participating, including your hospital, with a freestanding emergency